It's about 3:08 PM. Today is the 17th of November, 2017. We're doing a budget work session to kind of go over. We kind of finished up Public Works yesterday, some of the water and the wastewater, and we're going to look at all of the budget once more today. I don't know if anybody has anything specific. I have about three things I want to cover. I know Dave's got some questions. Why don't we look at what Randy gave us, the fee schedule? Because pretty much everything we decided yesterday or had consensus on applies, excuse me, applies to this fee schedule. So if you remember, there are multiple things that make up our bill. It isn't just the rates themselves. We've got debt retirement, a base fee, and the volume rate on the water and the wastewater. So what we kind of agreed to, just to reiterate yesterday, was that the retirement on the water would go up just a little bit. In the case of the smaller lines, the three-quarter inch lines or the one-inch, would go up just 50 cents. That's the debt retirement. Then garbage collection, which has nothing to do with the water, but that's part of the fee schedule, would go down 25 cents. So we've only got 25 cents there. And the base fee, which right now is $9 for wastewater, is going to stay the same. Debt retirement for wastewater is going down 10 cents. And the monthly fee is staying at $7. These are all the basic three-quarter inch and one-inch lines. And the water volume rate would stay at 8.66. So in essence, we are not raising the water rate per thousand gallons. And we're not raising the wastewater rate per thousand gallons. We are just raising the debt just a little bit and reducing the garbage.
And the overall total increase for the whole year is $1.80, with all the minuses and pluses.
For...
For everyone. $1.80, Lois.
How'd you come up with that?
Well, if you go up, you're taking a quarter away from garbage, and you're going down on the wastewater, 35. So if you total everything, at the end of the year, it's a $1.80 increase.
Oh, at the end of the year?
For the whole year.
Oh, oh, okay. I was going to say, no.
It's only 15 cents a month.
Yeah.
I think we can afford that.
Yeah.
No, that's just residential. We start looking at some of the others that are being adjusted net too, so.
But not, not much, not much.
Dollar, $2. The bigger ones are getting more hit.
Yeah, the retirement's going up quite a bit on the bigger lines. 50 cents and a dollar on mine, my business. It's not overwhelming by any means. It's doable.
Biggest one I could see would be the 10-inch line, was $49.
And there's only three of those.
I was going to say, there's only two or...
Two or three, and those are the big box stores. And I think they can absorb it after their tax decrease.
Any questions or issues on any of that?
I just have one, on reader meter. Read the meter. Does that mean when they go out to read?
Because all of them are pretty much on automatic readers now. So if they're forced to actually go to a house and read a meter for some reason, you know, anybody maybe that isn't hooked up or just an extra. That seems legitimate. Anything else? Everything else, like in the fire department and assessing, that's all staying the same. Zoning permits and maps and text amendments and everything's staying the same. Okay. Ah, there's John.
Sorry for being late.
That's okay.
Apologize to the chair.
We were just more worried about you.
If you talk too much, it's a problem.
All right, do you want to get into the next? Then he, Randy also ran an updated budget. He's got board adoption numbers in here for us, based on what we kind of said yesterday.
Actually, Lois put that together and I just sent it out.
Oh, thanks, Lois.
However, if I'm correct, there's only one question as whether or not law enforcement is 60 or 80 hours, right, Randy?
There were, there were two items that we didn't really have the ability to act on. One, that was a discussion item, was a recommendation that I had made, was to potentially reduce the, well, let me back up a little bit. As you remember from the original proposed budget, by the time we got through all of the expenditures and revenues, there was only a $9,000 cushion at the end of revenue over expenses. So at that time, because that margin was so small, I suggested that really the only place in the budget that we could look would be service that we don't have to provide, and that's the sheriff's project, contract, because that's an optional expenditure. We're not required to do that.
Well, if I may interject, the $9,000 then also had, would have to cover any raises that were going to go in.
Correct.
For the 1.5%, 2% or whatever.
Right.
And whatever difference would be necessary to cover the insurance, the health insurance.
Correct.
Because we only have 12% budgeted, and we're hearing 20 to 30%.
Right.
So the $9,000 isn't going to go very far.
No, we budgeted that 12% based upon prediction that we got from our agent to begin with, based on very preliminary returns that he had seen. He estimated that 12% would be a reasonable figure to put in the budget. So that's what we built. And as it turned out, our current plan came back at 30.2%, or 32.1%, that's what it was. 32.1%, which obviously we're not going to accept. So we're right now in the process of looking at other options. And as Supervisor Grant indicated, we have 12% in the budget. The one that looks most comparable to the plan that we currently have with Blue Cross is 20.23%, I believe it was. But there is also a second plan that now we qualify for. So we could have two options, and that might drop that 20% down. We don't know that as yet. So that, that's still an item for consideration in the budget ultimately as we go forward. We won't know an answer to that until we get to the point of actually adopting a budget, most likely. But the question of the Sheriff's Department, what I suggested was, if we wanted to look at retaining some cushion in our budget, we could back the sheriff's contract from 80 hours to 20, or 80 hours down 20 to 60 hours. That would save us about $48,000 in around numbers. And we would then limit the sheriff's activity to strictly law enforcement and traffic control on residential complaints, and not provide any of the loss control services to the commercial community. So that was my rationale. The residents, you know, who are paying the full boat on the taxes now would still have the full service. But we would be reducing the, well, retail fraud that's been eating up a lot of the sheriff's time.
How do you control that?
Through, A, through the contract, number one. We would specify that the funded portion that we, that we provide is specifically for residential law enforcement response and for traffic control. And then we would notify Central Dispatch that on those retail fraud claims that come in, our deputy would not be dispatched on that. They would wait for the regular patrol deputies.
Send the...
Or state police.
And they could send the closest car.
Yes.
Yeah, I like that idea, I really do. I think that why should we pay to have these box stores?
Well, if you think about it, the whole rationale, when that was done, when that contract was originally entered into, was for additional law enforcement protection for our residential areas, for Trowbridge and the other, you know, Huron Woods, Bishop Woods, the residential areas of the township, so that we would have a presence that the residents would not have to wait. At the time, we were having some issues with break-ins. We were having some roaming folks that were doing vandalism-type damage to vehicles and a variety of things. So we wanted to have a closer presence to be able to respond to those rather than waiting a half hour or 20 minutes for the regular patrol, recognizing that at certain times of the day, there may only be one or two cars patrolling the entire county. So it was at that time that the board made the decision to bite the bullet and fund it out of the general fund. It is purely funded out of general fund. There's no mileage involved in it. There's no assessment involved in it. So it's $194,000 a year that we put towards it. And what we've seen over the last few years is that much of that time is devoted to retail fraud. So if we eliminate that, my theory was we could cut the contract by about 20 hours.
Randy?
I don't think the residents will even notice, in my opinion. Because right now, they were spending their time at the big box stores. And now they'll be, maybe they'll even notice.
Be more.
More of a presence, because they'll be in the township doing our activities that we specify.
Yep, it's a better use of funds in my mind, too.
Well, and we're very thin. I mean, I'm sorry.
I was first.
I just had a question. If, if the deputies write any traffic violation tickets, does that go into our general fund then?
It's the library.
No, it actually, it actually goes to the district court. You know, the district court takes, takes the bulk of that.
Nothing comes here?
We don't get revenue from the traffic citations. But at the same time, you know, we have, we have accumulated a reputation for being unsafe that isn't warranted for us. It's simply because the traffic violations are not being enforced. They're not being addressed. The illegal left turns at the Commerce Light, the speed, the distracted driving, all of those things are not being addressed currently.
Oh, that's because they're over at Walmart or Target or somewhere else?
That's my point.
It's, I like that idea.
Go ahead, John.
The point is, when, some time ago, we could have backed up and said, "Let's do exactly what we're asking now. Let's not have the 80 hours spent with, with our people being called off and put over on the big box stores." And I'm just being careful about, when you're reducing it, we're going to have to make sure that the citizens understand that what we're reducing the patrol for is what's going on at the stores. I think they would much rather have had us say, "Let's just take that full 80 hours and ask that it be spent on patrol."
This wouldn't be the first time. If you look at, if you look in your budget on page 101.9, if you look at 2014, we were down to 139,500. We were at 60 hours. So we've gone 80, 60, 80, 60. I mean, we've done that in the past. You know, and realistically, this is, you know, back six years ago, Supervisor Limata at the time, and I told you, along about 18 or 19, we're going to be in a spot where we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions because the revenue is not there anymore. And that was, you know, we've, we've whittled away our fund balance, you know. Right, right off the bat, we had to refund three years of taxes. And then we've had three more years of, of living on reserves, basically. We're at the point now where we've got a $9,000 cushion, that's all. Remember, two years ago, three years ago, we had $100,000.
Yeah. It's, it's just that you have to realize that if there's something very unpopular funded by the township, people are going to say, "You're, you're taking money from the patrol for this unpopular item." That's what you're going to face.
Well, they'll say...
The board is going to face that. I, I realize we have to face reality, but that, that, that's...
It's your car, John?
Oh, it just stopped.
Probably bumped your fob in your pocket or something. Can we get a report on how many hours in the last two years have, have been spent on an average per month just on retail fraud?
I think we can. Yeah, I think the Sheriff's Department tracks that. I'm pretty sure they do.
You get it every month.
Well, but you don't get the number of hours. You just get the number of incidents.
Well, if it's two hours for every time you got that, it's two hours, if you're...
At least, yeah, at least by the time they go and do the reports and everything. But, you know, but I guess the point is, what is it that, what is it that the township wants to accomplish with the law enforcement dollars that are being spent? Do, do you want actual residential responses and traffic control? Or do you want spending time doing retail fraud and other type activities?
I think if, if our residents knew the amount of hours that are spent on retail fraud that they're paying for, that I don't think they would be very happy with that anyhow. I mean, that's not the responsibility of our residents, to pay for the big box stores, to have somebody that we're paying for. Let it come out of the state police or other patrol units that happen to be out there. They may have to wait half an hour.
Yeah, you know, realistically, my focus when I went through this was, you know, we went into this budget with the expectation that we were not going to reduce direct services to the residents or any of the things that were required to, to perform. And it came down to recreation and law enforcement, is what it came down to. And the question then is, do we stop in midstream the efforts that we're making in recreation? Or do we, do we look at streamlining the law enforcement? You know, that's $200,000, and recreation is not anywhere near that. But we still have some things we have to do. We have to finish up Lyons Field. We've got the trailhead at Schwemwood. We've got a number of, number of things that are in the works. Do we stop those, or do we change the law enforcement? I mean, that's, that's what I came down to. I didn't want to cut any of the things out of the planning, budget, or the zoning, or obviously, we can't cut anything out of the assessing. You know, so I mean, we've got very few places that we can actually make a, a cut of any kind of significance. And I'm very uncomfortable going into the winter with only $9,000 in the bank.
Randy, have you talked to the store, like Walmart and that? What are they doing? Like I said before, when I contacted down in Appleton and there, they said over $100. When, when do they call here? Is it because of $5 or something like that, or?
It was, and we've tightened up on that, but it's still, it's still a draw. And, you know, and the question is, can we live with 60 hours? Do we feel we need 80?
From my perspective, it never was a reduction to take any coverage away from the residents. I just think it's foolish that we spend 80 hours and a large portion of that goes to the retail fraud. I don't think we should be saddled, I don't think the residents should be saddled with paying for that. And I think, if anything, the residents are going to see an increase in coverage as opposed to a reduction with, with more of a directed coverage and not include the retail fraud in, in the 60 hours.
We kind of have consensus that we want to go over 60 from 80? Contract's up the end of the year, so we don't have to decide tonight, but...
No, it's a discussion, you know, it's a discussion point. You know, it's, you have, don't have a lot of options this year in terms of where you head.
I would be in favor of reducing the, the budget to reflect 60 hours as opposed to 80.
As long as they eliminate the retail fraud portion of it.
How do you do that?
Well, and I, I think, I think if...
Your contract.
They're not willing to renegotiate that contract to the point that we can eliminate retail fraud, there's, there's something else we need to take a look at because we're not getting what we're paying for.
Exactly.
You know, and realistically, all we'd be doing is redefining your contract to what, what is it that the township wants for the money they're spending? What service are you buying? And the service that, that I suggest that you are buying is residential response and traffic enforcement are the two key items that, you know, that you as a governing body are obligated to perform. The individuals, the individual stores and the business community can provide their own loss control. They do all over the place. In fact, I think they do now. It's just that they don't intervene at all. They identify somebody who's engaging in an improper act, and they watch them until they get outside the store, and then they let law enforcement take it over.
They obviously do something if the deputy is not on duty. So they're just going to have to do that all the time.
Who's making that call?
Central Dispatch.
That's what I mean, that they have to, if it's a store...
If they know our deputy doesn't do retail fraud, they'll just send the closest car.
Yep.
Whether it be another county unit or a state unit or whomever.
Yeah, but understand, you know, the, when we were discussing this staff-wise, you know, within, within the staff, that question came up about, you know, it is a, it is a law. And, you know, my response to that was, "We're buying a service. This is not something we're obligated to provide." So what service is it that we want to provide? And you want to provide residential service to the folks that are paying property taxes, and you want to provide safety through the corridor. In particular, the corridor, because we get so much bad press about the unsafe corridor. It's only unsafe because of the driver behaviors. It's not the corridor.
That's going to be our priority.
You never see the deputy sitting there to try to catch somebody speeding or illegal turns or...
More so recently, but not too much.
They've seen him watch a guy dig a lefty.
Yeah, he watched him.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, well, I've seen it. I mean, you know, I, I see it too. But, you know, the, the point is, unless we start enforcing some of those, it's never going to change. You know, you got to start having some people pulled over on the side of the road visibly so people see it's being enforced.
Monthly reports provided by them don't indicate very many tickets for 80 hours of work.
And, you know, admittedly, admittedly, in their defense, it is difficult to pull somebody over on the US 41 corridor because there really isn't anywhere to pull them over hardly, you know, outside of traffic, other than up on the safety strip. So it's, you know, but again, I think we can better spend the time.
That's Jason's problem, because he didn't put that extra lane in there.
You're telling me we can remove the safety strips that day?
Well, there's a lot of parking lots. They're pulling over in my parking lot all the time. They can pull over in the mall or AutoZone. That's, there's room. They just have to go a little farther.
I guess the bottom line is, if, if we want to have some, some financial cushion, some financial reserve, there aren't many places we can get it from.
I'd be in favor of going back to 60 hours.
Me too.
I think that's consensus.
I think if we do that, we have then be cognizant of anything else that comes up that we're just not going to...
We can always change it. We can always change it.
Because there's no dollars there right now.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we have no cushion, like Randy said. That $9,000 is going to go for something. So we don't even, we not only don't have more, we don't have enough to cover what we need right now. We know we need more.
Anything over 12% on the health insurance has to come out of that $9,000.
It's not much.
Okay, so we kind of have consensus on that.
Yeah.
Let's go to something else. Any questions on the budget itself that was rerun?
Jason, Jason has a suggestion.
Good afternoon. Happy Thanksgiving to you all. Two things that came to mind at the end of this process. Actually, it's been in my mind for a while. But first, the community room is well-received, well-used, and has a lot of different types of people renting it. Businesses, organizations, individuals, families, et cetera. In my opinion, we could use some better AV equipment in there. In my opinion, we could use drop-down screen and an in-ceiling projector. The one TV that we have now, at the time when we developed, you know, the building, the 60-inch television, which is this size, you know, we have three of them in here, and that room's probably a time and a half bigger than it is now. So I attended a workshop at Northern Michigan University. Of course, that's northern up in Cohodas, but they had a giant 100-inch TV in there, and you could see that from anywhere in the room very clearly. We did have an estimate done, I think it was a couple of years ago from, you know, Best Buy's Geek Squad team. And they, they estimated that for between, I want to say it was $3,000 and $4,000, they could really put a nice unit in there that could be used. You could have, keep the TV in there where it is, but then on the long wall, like on the, on the east wall, you could have a, a screen that would drop down. I think that it would make a big difference in usership. And I think that our, that our rates, you know, for renting the space are adequate enough. And I was going to have Andrew put together, you know, how much, you know, we've been making off the room, or, excuse me, paying back towards the payoff of the room. But just something to think about, and something that could be implemented fairly quickly if the board was able to find that amount of money. Secondly, as you know, we have our new staff planner on board. He's been doing a great job. He's made it through his probationary period, and I assume he will be here for, for some time. That being said, Randy and I have discussed and would like your opinion on converting one of the, the small conference room potentially into an office for him. As a professional planner, it helps to have a room where you can have confidential conversations. And sometimes in the bullpen in the office, it gets kind of loud in there. And, you know, I don't think it would cost very much. And I suspect that I can absorb that cost out of my budget even, the way it's presented now, to outfit him with some office furniture, if that's the rate, the way that the board wants to go. But it's something that I'd like you guys to consider. And Randy suggested that I run through you prior to, you know, I guess, making any decisions on my own. But I think it's, I think that smaller conference room is a bit underutilized. It's a nice feature to have. And I know that that smaller conference room is the exact same size as our offices, the rest of the offices. And I think it was actually designed that way in case we have another staff person that we wanted to outfit with a, with a, with an office. So just something to think about, and I would appreciate any of your comments or questions about that, if you have any.
It sounds good, but I'm looking at when the auditors are in there, they use that small conference room the whole time they're in there. And if we want to use a conference room, we go to the big one. So there is a downsized to doing that. It's used at different times in that too, so.
Yeah, well, you could use this room here.
They could use the community room, too.
Yeah, we have space. This, this room is, this boardroom is basically, this room is used for meetings. We really don't rent this room. So this room is free a lot of the time.
But what I was thinking, we could put three tables in that room right there, and you can always use the tables when the auditors come.
Yeah, the conference room table could be brought in anywhere, the community room or in here.
That's just storage back there.
Yeah.
It's storage in. Or you can have it right in front here, meetings or whatever.
Those storage units, units, that room there is the size of a small office. Plenty of room for table and chairs. Just a suggestion. You know, like I said, both those items are something that were, were thought out pretty thoroughly. And I think what happens is, whenever there's something going on in the community room, I'm the one that responds to the Geek Squad questions and goes and hooks up this computer or that printer or that projector. It would be nice to have something that's not so clunky and really easy to use for all the different people that, that rent the room.
And also, too, to tag on to Jason, the, the community room does not have its own sound system. It's tagged onto this system here. And it's kind of awkward because we can't, I guess we thought of it was good at the time, but if we have a board meeting in here and we have something going in the community room, that sound system cannot be used because they're going to get our conversation in there. So I think we should separate the systems just to make it usable.
Lois, do we, I didn't realize we don't have a separate account. I know you guys both had questions. We didn't have a separate account for the community room, do we, in revenues?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a separate revenue.
Well, it's not in the budget.
Oh, you use your fee. Yeah, okay, sorry.
Monthly one, you'll see it.
Okay, yeah, actually, Dan was first.
I was just wondering, I understand there are several, I won't say businesses or organizations that use the room for nothing, correct?
Government.
I'm sorry?
Government. I think all government, right?
Well, yeah, the, the ones that we directly participate in or work with.
Why is that?
It's, it's the same as residents. Residents pay a different rate than what non-residents do. And those governmental entities that, that we, that either support us or that we work with, we don't charge them to use it. But that doesn't mean we couldn't.
Well, when the, when the carpet is ruined and things are broke or whatever, who's going to pay to...
Yeah, that's, that's, right now, it's out of the...
A bigger sound system. I mean, even $100 or something.
We can certainly revisit the rental fees, very low.
I just, I don't know, I think it's a, it's a very nice room. I just think people should have to pay something to use it.
We can certainly do that.
Do they judge?
It was basically an administrative decision. The board didn't act on that, so, I mean, if, if we, you know, I mean, we are in, we are in need of revenue, so there's certainly nothing wrong with, you know, making a change that as of January 1st, we're revising the rates.
Looking at what Jason is talking about far as electronics and that, we're getting these dollars in charter every quarter and that.
Mm-hmm.
Put them in a separate account now, and that was for electronics stuff.
Communication, yeah.
Communications. Is that something that we want to look at, taking that dollars and utilizing it? I don't know. It's a thought and that.
It's part of the budget right now. It's just part of the general fund.
Yeah, it's in the general fund revenues.
It's part of that $9,000 that's left.
Well, that was supposed to be used for...
We never really, we wanted to, but we never really made a motion.
Well, we've, we've used it. We've used it for a lot of, we used it for some of these materials in the construction project and the process as well. I mean, it's, we've been tapping most of our reserve funds for operations, I mean, the last couple of years.
We can do that too. Randy?
Yeah, I know, I think a lot of the organizations are charged to use our room, but I think if you charged a nominal fee of like even $50 to $100, I don't think that's going to preclude from any of these organizations from using it because we have a great facility, we got great parking, and they love to come here, so.
And we've been the same since we opened.
I think it would only make it more attractive to have those improved AV.
John?
Not only is it a great facility, and I think that, I think that most of these groups that use the room, used to have it in their budget anyway. When they were getting other locations to hold their meetings, they were used to paying sizable amount of money. So I think that's a good suggestion, not necessarily for our own residents, but I think that for the units that do use it, that are organized and they have budgets, I think that some kind of increase so that we could add to the facilities, make it more palatable for them, that's great. The other point I want to make is that we've gone to the trouble of hiring another person to work with the planner and work on these projects that we've got. Once you've done that, you have to look at what, how do you get the best results out of having those people onboard? And I can tell you that someone who is doing what he's doing out there, having an office that you can close the door, will result in a better product from the individual. It just does. And so I think that we've made the first step, we've got it, and we've got some qualified people. Let's give them the best shot they can take by giving them a facility to work in where they can have the privacy to look at some of these very complex things.
Appreciate your comments, thank you.
Randy?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with converting the small conference room into an office. If we really need that extra small conference room, Jason's correct, that room back there, which is a storage right now, is plenty big enough for a small conference room. If we do need one, we could convert that storage room right there to a small conference room if we really need one.
Something that he's going to use every day, and if it inconveniences other people a couple of times a year, so be it.
Yeah, like I said, that room back there is plenty big enough if we need to make that. We just, there's just partitions in there in the Christmas tree, so we can always put that in our storage we have down the road, so.
You don't want the auditors to be too comfortable here.
Speak for yourself.
Yes, Pete?
The revenue as of the end of September is $8,740 for the community room.
Wow, that's impressive, and those are with nominal fees. I agree with Trustee Marx's comments and Trustee Eversen's comments about, you know, the DNR can afford to rent the room, Fish and Wildlife, they all have federal, state funding, so, I mean, those are the folks that we, you know, should, should be, not gouging, but, you know, taking advantage of their, their funds. We have a beautiful room. I would put this room up against any room around here, and plus, we're so centrally located, it's easily accessible, and people love, you know, the photos on the wall, they love, we get lots of positive comments, so I think it only, you know, look at a restaurant, like I used to work at the Casa in high school, they've always put money back into their restaurant, and they keep doing well, they keep doing well. Well, that's because they invest in that. And so I would just assume that we would continue to do the same. We'll do some new pictures up on the wall, we'll do a fresh AV system, and I think it'll go much more smoother, much more smoothly moving into next year if that's possible.
Do they pay for the holiday? Who? Different agencies?
They don't pay for the room, but you have to buy the meals.
Get the food from that place.
But we'll leave water out there.
Provide that, you always do the water.
Foods where they make the money.
I just assumed that we would charge everybody and that nobody got to...
I agree, I mean, that's, I was, I was kind of flabbergasted when I, I heard that we did not, that we had government agencies getting it for free, and I thought, that's just not right.
It's not as, as regular as you'd think though. It's, I think it's only a couple of times a year, only a couple of groups that I've heard of, but, you know, we have an investment that we need to take care of, and now if we put a little bit more in that investment, then we need to recoup that, so.
Renee?
We were on DNR and a restaurant that were using the room in there. When we first started, we weren't charging them anything, and I questioned it, and all of a sudden, we started charging. So I says, they got their own budgets. I've seen their budgets. They have budgets for meeting rooms and everything else and that. So we just did, I don't know how far we went with that, so. I think the other, changing gears to the room for the other planner, by converting that into a office, we are growing, and there's no question about that. How fast we grow is going to be something else in that too, but we're going to be out of office spaces around the edge unless some people are starting to share offices and that, and I've been through that, so. So you're back into center, center aisle again, into the bullpen, so that's something we have to look at the future too, because we talked about that when we're building the building, that if we ran out of room, first thing we're going to do is move into the community room, partition that off, so I think that's a few, into the future yet, but that's the next step.
Either that or you build in the middle. You put walls in the middle.
Put walls around it.
Yes, Ms. Lois.
You have a comment, DNR does pay to one of our customers because they do rent the entire day.
So basically, we probably don't charge if it's something we're participating in, if Dulce is trading assessors or something.
Yeah, like clerks meeting, we don't, but it's only in an hour.
Because it's our stuff. Dave?
I would, would think, and I hate to put a damper on this whole thing, I would think we need to refer this back to the manager to come up with a proposed rate structure. And, and I would think right along with that proposed rate structure would be the justification and where you're going to, in that proposed rate structure, be able to pay for the new screen. It's just, it's, I don't think it's something that the board needs to consider other than, say, work up a new rate structure. The same as, as converting that small conference room, I think you need to see some costs, where the money's coming from, and then it's just a matter of if we're going to do it or if we aren't. We don't really have any, any costs to do that yet, so.
Yeah, well, he wanted to see if we were going to be amenable to any of this. If we said no, there's no point in going any farther, so.
The next step would be to...
This is what I would like for Christmas.
Consensus.
I think put it in writing, give it to board, and we'll have to make a decision at that point in time.
Give it to the manager.
Yeah, I really need to...
Yeah, and that's what I was looking for, then I can work with Randy. But I think we can squeeze it out of my budget. I think it'd be a couple thousand for office furniture. He already has a computer, he doesn't need anything else, maybe a telephone, but...
The room is, the room is equipped the same as any other office, so everything is there.
And it was designed that way. It'll also allow us to have an intern in the planning department be sitting where Isaac is now too, so, and we do, we are going to chase that. We do want interns working here. Obviously, they, they do really well when they come here, so. Isaac's been great. I don't know if you've had a chance to work with him one-on-one yet, but he's been outstanding, and we're very lucky to have him.
Okay, anything else on that?
Thank you.
Good, thanks. Next, anything else for anybody else? Randy, you had suggested at one point and a couple other board members too about wage increases for our committees and this board.
Yeah, I have a...
We have to kind of...
I have a spreadsheet that Lois put together here. It's for every, it's Supervisor Board, Clerk, Treasurer, Planning Commission, Board of Review, and ZBA, which is our paid committees. If we, it's, if it's a, if we do a 2% increase for everyone, it's a $1,298 increase, so it really isn't that much. The wages were last adjusted in 2008.
10 years. Are we dedicated or what? Yes, Dave?
I would, I would hope that if you decide to do something with the wages, that it would be something along the same lines that applies to everybody else that works here. There's a formula that the manager has put together already, and I would think we would apply ourselves to the same formula.
That would be easy.
I personally wouldn't support anything else. I think it sets ourselves apart from somebody we shouldn't be setting ourselves apart from.
We're not Congress.
They've got raises for the last 10 years, and we didn't, so I mean, if you want to try to be equal.
All that aside.
Hey, Dave? We're not Congress.
We're not doubling ourselves.
I'm still surprised I get a check for this.
You're just having too much fun? Is that it? I got to give you more work?
Must be it.
That's it.
I don't have a problem either way. The only problem is, is if we increase our salary, we have to put it in a resolution for the December meeting, so, and we should have these num, I think you have the numbers already, right, Randy, for the adjusted wage for this year?
Well, I, I think if you agree on that same formula for annually affecting all that...
Then no one can complain.
Then we never have to go back and do it again. We're just, we're, that's what it is, and next year, we're the same thing.
I don't have a problem with that.
Totally makes sense.
Okay, so we kind of have consensus on that in the police department. It seemed like there was one more I had. Oh, I just want to, this is a little off topic, but we, do you know when we approve the CIP?
Years ago.
But that was part of my discussion with Kirk yesterday, and I told him, at one point, we were looking at trying to buy a package, and they were cost prohibitive, and we didn't have the money or the time to put it together. So I put this spreadsheet together, and I think you've all seen it at one point, just, it's a one-page on each project, and you just put down the amortization and the years and everything. So Kirk said he's been doing this, and I said, the board never sees this. So I just wanted to kind of mention that when we have this discussion in January or whenever we do about the CIP, we need to have something in place. We don't come up with something else. We need to have something to look at to justify what he's trying to present, or whether it's a vehicle or a police vehicle or something like that. So we're going to back up and kind of regroup when we talk about the CIP. I'm just going to force us to have a meeting in January, just so you know. It's just something I brought up. Yes, Dave?
As long as we're off subject.
It's all part of the budget.
I, I know, but I would think that we would step it back a little bit further than that CIP because I think we've got a master plan for the, that has been amended since 2013. I think we need to review that, and that's the thing that the board should get involved in, and that should come before the CIP because once the master plan is done, then everything in the CIP should line up with what's in the master plan. And I think to do that, there's a big thick report from StanTech with the water analysis and study. That needs...
I just said that.
That needs to be reviewed.
Yep.
And I'd just like to see that on a board agenda sooner rather than later, just to discuss the general direction, but I would think the first thing this board needs to do is, is decide whether they want to amend that master plan, because that's where you start with, what are you going to do with Phase 2 and when's it going to be done?
Right, I already talked to Jason. Planning is going to start.
Everything, everything works from that, so I would think that would be the board responsibility to fix that first.
Yep. You're going to, planning is going to start working on that in January, so we've got that rolling. So this is part of it. This is our part of it, how that fits in. So that's all I had. Anybody else has got? Dave, you said you had some questions?
I had some questions about, not just on the general fund, I mean...
Yeah, this is open.
Quite open. It's on the water and the wastewater, and it is, has to do with the surpluses in each one of those, and they're on, we can start to tackle the water first. It's a general comment, in the water, we have a surplus that's under 955, it's page 15.
Are we in the new one now?
In the new one.
Underwater?
Yep. And down at the bottom of page 15, there's a contingency with a miscellaneous, and we put all of our surplus funds from our rate freezes and CIP abatements this year, we put it into the same contingency fund. I would suggest that the money that comes out of that maneuver should go someplace else so it is more designated for what it was intended for, and it doesn't get dipped into, and maybe the manager would have some recommendation as to what that account should be and where it should be. But I would think it would be there and in the wastewater that that money would be earmarked for in a different fund, so that we know where that money came from and what it was intended for, because it's intended for the board to decide what you want to do with that, whether it's pay off debt service or do whatever, and it shouldn't be, I just don't think it should be part of that contingency money because...
Right, I agree. Lois, what do you think? Where could we put that? Do you want to do another account under contingency, or do you want, we don't want to set it up as a capital because we just want a holding place?
I'm just not sure what you'd call it.
Yeah, that would probably be...
Or what?
Retained earnings.
Retained earnings.
Well, it'll, it'll be, probably be spent this year.
Right.
We just don't want it to get lost in, we don't want Kirk to spend it.
Well, we don't want us to spend it.
Yeah.
We've only got a $9,000 contingency there, and now we've made it 159.
Well, that's in the general. Yeah, this is water.
Yeah, mix the funds, you can't mix the funds.
Exactly.
So if you want to...
Well, it's restricted anyway.
Put it, I don't know, just a temporary something or other, just so we can identify it?
Well, if you want to identify it, you need to identify it.
Maybe the manager got an idea what he would call that.
I mean, basically, you've got operation maintenance funds, you've got debt funds, you've got replacement improvement funds, and then you've got miscellaneous. The miscellaneous is whatever is left over, and if you want to designate, you designate it for one of the other areas.
Well, I...
And I think, and I think that's what you want to do, but...
I want to pay off debt with it. If we want to try to do that before December, it was just trying to get the budget organized. We can do that in January.
There has to be a way to designate that. There must be something in the charter accounts that we can, that we can locate to clarify. Basically, what you're talking about is you're talking about a financial decision that you've made to set money aside, and you want to make sure it doesn't get used for something that you don't want to use it for.
Or we decide, right.
So it must be, I mean, it's not really a restricted, restricted from the standpoint that you're restricting it. It's not a legally restricted fund like Kirk's talking about.
Right, it's earmarked, but it's not really earmarked.
Let us take a look at the charter accounts and see what we can come up with in terms of a good existing definition, a financial, that's, that's in our charter accounts that we could potentially plug in there to identify that.
I would like to see us do that in water and in wastewater.
Mm-hmm. Can we, Randy, come up with, since the consensus is, if I'm not overspeaking, to pay down debt, can we get an estimated number from you or Lois at some point? pay down debt, can we get an estimated number from you or Lois at some point? What, you know, if we paid these January 15th or something, or whenever the next payments due, what the money is? What can we pay off? By the time you get rid of the interest that we're not going to have to pay? What is that number? Is it the whole 80,000 or whatever?
No, that's pretty easily calculated. All you're talking about is paying the principal. You're not going to pay any interest that's going to accrue, you're just going to pay the principal. So the savings on the interest is right off the bat. But that also increases the amount of those, you know, you don't have to include the interest cost in there. So you're just looking at the principal cost to knock down.
Some of these are, some of them are like once or twice a year we pay them. So there's going to be accumulated interest we're not going to have to pay. If we pay it in January, the payment's not due until July or something.
Right.
You know, some of these aren't every month.
It can be looked at.
That's not to make that part of the budget process, right? That's just some additional information, so we can decide what to do.
Right, yeah. But if we wait too long, it's going to be February, March, and none of this is going to.
I think that's an early next week kind of thing.
Yep, that would be great. And maybe we can decide by the end of the year what we want to do, if we have that number.
What's the number of things we had to sign for that?
Questions, or?
We've got sidebar going.
Just for the record, when we signed the library contract, one of the issues they had to sign on as well was that library traffic fines would go.
Penal fines.
The penal fines.
Yeah.
We didn't have a choice on it, on the state statute. We did sign it, they didn't get it, we didn't get it anyway.
Yeah, it's in a problem.
I don't think that.
No, we don't get it. I just want you to know who did get it.
I don't think we should leave that die yet. One of these days, we should.
It didn't all go to their courts.
Without, you know, blowing it all out of proportion, just whatever the steps that changed, and I think John knew what the steps were that we had to change, but when it got so blown out of proportion there for a while, it's just crazy. But if you look at the penal fines, we're struggling to pay for it. We should be getting some penal fines for our cost of enforcement, you know?
Paying us wages.
John took a beating on that one.
It's part of the reason we're not, is state legislation. I mean, that happens over and over again, but I just, we need to know where things are going, even though we don't have any control over it.
I think what the status of the states and stuff like that, where they're, you know, working on budgets and that, and they understand it more, I think it might be a good time to start on something like that.
You can add that, just let me know when you want to put something on the agenda. You're all welcome to add anything. Dave, you had a couple more?
They're not actually budget-related. I guess the one is, I was wondering what the contracted services were for under stormwater. The under expenditures, 801, there's $1,500, and I just, is that just a general thing, or is that for something specific?
Well, right, the only, the stormwater fund really doesn't receive any revenues. So our ordinance, stormwater management ordinance, established as a fee schedule, and, you know, this was thoroughly discussed back in 2016. And what it is, the only non-refundable portion of that is $500. So that's why every project we have, we're only going to receive $500 in revenue. And then there's a deposit, a minimum of $5,000, that's based on the estimated cost of construction. And out of that deposit, we pay, we've got contracted services to do things like review, in some cases possibly inspection. But it's mainly legal and engineering review.
But we get reimbursed for all that, don't we?
No, that's what he's saying. There's a $5,000 deposit, and then we only keep 500, but any of those things that have to happen in the meantime, the inspections and stuff, come out of the 5,000 that they give us.
I was under the understanding with that stormwater ordinance, that the developer paid all the review costs.
Correct. And that's what the deposit is for, so.
Okay, so I'm back to my 50.
So whatever the cost is, does come out of that, so.
I guess that didn't answer my question. I was, it's my understanding that the monies you're talking about, the deposit, and what the contractor, the developer pays, he pays for all of our in-house reviews of his stormwater plans and all that stuff. So my question was, I didn't mean, I just thought it was an easy question, is what is $1,500 worth of contracted services for?
So I think.
That's Carl Baldwin, isn't it, the review plan?
That would be stuff that we want, that we have to have done. Yeah, we did that with some of, was it Mahaney's last year? We had, we had some stuff that we sent to the attorney to get clarified, so we would have to pay for that.
And the stormwater fund?
Yeah, I don't know if it was, it was one of the developments up there, I remember being in your office talking about it, and you were showing me the bills, and there was a difference, and you said that it was something that you had requested from Roger, so we had to pay for it, to get clarification on something.
But we're also responsible for some plan review, and that's, you know, we usually contract with Carl Baldwin to do that.
Yeah, Baldwin was one of them.
Yeah, I understand that, but that money that we spend to have him review that is covered by, the actual developer pays that fee.
Not all of it.
Not always.
We pay for some of that.
Could be something we're asking for.
Not at all? Okay, I thought we did.
That's only if we, if we request something that's not specifically related to that project.
So it's just there in case we need something?
Yeah, it's just basically to balance the budget.
All right.
That's all it is.
That was the end of my question.
That's it?
The last thing.
Right.
Was the stormwater ordinance, that, and this is totally unrelated to the budget, I would like to see that get on an agenda so we can take a look at it, because there's a number of things that don't make sense to me. Right off the top of my head, I don't understand why the stormwater ordinance is not in part of our other ordinances, it's part of planning. And I guess the review process that we go through, or that the developers go through for their stormwater plans, they have to come up with a plan, and then we have to pay another engineer to review the same plan that an engineer come up with. It seems like we're charging a developer to pay for that twice, and it seems to me we only have two engineering firms that are authorized to do stormwater plans, so it just seems like we're constantly using the same two engineering firms to check each other. And if they're approved, they're approved. I don't know why we have to have an approved firm be checked by another approved firm.
Well, partly because we take responsibility and ownership, and we want to make sure that what they're understanding, I mean, that's not my decision, but would you want to start with talking to Kirk first? And does everybody want to go through that? We can.
No, I can, I can talk to Kirk. See if he's still talking, do we? Yeah, he's still talking.
Yes, Ernie?
On solid waste, I just have a question that, and I don't know if I brought it before, under, oh, community promotion. Can you tell me what we're using? $15,000 on the community promotion? Because I'm trying to go back through the water and the wastewater, and I don't see anything in there, so.
Solid waste you're talking about?
Solid waste, yeah.
Number 880?
Yes.
At the bins, the bins and such?
What's the question?
Solid waste.
What is it?
15,000.
It's the monthly drop-off, you know, the first Wednesday.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's the ads in the papers and that, and?
Yeah, and labor costs, and then plus, it's also.
The first Wednesday, operations.
Right. It's also.
The extra leaf drop-off.
I think part of the fees in there as well, right?
All those kinds of things.
Okay, it's all the ads in the paper, okay.
The contractual fee?
Right.
Tipping fees for that, tipping fees for that drop-off as well.
Anything else?
I think we have a consensus budget.
I think so. Okay, then we can give the manager direction to go ahead and post it.
Get the ad together for the Mining Journal?
Yep.
Talking about a public hearing on the 5th, then?
Correct. Well, I'll get back with you the final, with the official date, because the Mining Journal's going to need a few days to get the ad ready, and then to place it, I'll know when it's in, and then it's seven days after that. But we can target for the 5th.
But by the 15th of December.
If we have it, if we have it on the 5th, then we should be good.
When you get that adjusted wage increase, let me know, and then I'll have Lois calculate that.
Do you want it in percent?
Yeah. I know you should have that number shortly, because I have to put a resolution together for that.
Should be, I'm guessing by, hopefully, this coming week, we'll have that last figure.
Yeah, we'll need the health insurance to plug in here anyway.
Well, we should have, hopefully, we'll have that by the end of next week. Hopefully, we should have that. We should have a better picture. What it's going to involve is, we've been approved of the two plans, now the question is how many people might be interested in that second plan, which will then modify the cost of the first one, the base plan.
So we're really looking at the 19th of December?
Probably, for the final adoption.
Right.
Which is what we started out with in the plan.
We really shouldn't need Monday and Tuesday, right? I don't have my calendar, but I believe it.
Now, the only other piece of this that's still a variable is what's going to happen with the tax tribunal with the Menards-Eskanaba case. That's still out there. That case is not even on the docket yet, so I don't suspect they're going to do anything until into 2018. We have other, we've settled a couple, but we have other pending cases, so I do have 25,000 in the general fund miscellaneous, which is where we put the miscellaneous tax issue. So I've got that in there for extra witnesses and for presentation of cases. So if the tribunal follows the direction of the Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals, or when we reverse that, Court of Appeals supported by the Supreme Court, we may get some of our revenue back, but we wouldn't see that until 19.
Till when?
19.
By getting back.
Because we've already sent out.
Oh, yeah, trade to it, yeah, yeah.
By getting back, it means it won't go down as much as we thought.
Well, instead of 60%, maybe it'll be 30%. You know, it's not going to be all the way back to what it was, because basically, what the Court of Appeals and Supreme Court said was, is you have to use all three methods to come up with a rationale, which means that it's not going to be highest and best use, and it's not going to be dark stores, it's going to be somewhere in between, which is probably going to be around 50%. So I'm estimating 2019, we might see about a little bit more revenue coming from the big box stores going forward. But you wouldn't see that till 19.
Might even be later.
Let's hope so.
It might even be later, depends on when the tribunal takes up, depends on whether the tribunal wants to make a point, you know? They control their own docket.
We can see it till 20.
Right.
Maybe late in 18 before they hear that case, just to make a point.
There's no effort on the governor's part to amend any of the direction that is given to the tribunal.
Or the legislature, the Senate in particular.
It's a long time coming.
Okay, I think we're finished, and then we'll cancel Monday and Tuesday's meetings, work sessions.
Thank you.
We've got a long weekend.
Board meeting on Tuesday, 6:30.